Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve agenda for any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, I don't have any additions or corrections for you.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, implication, Christ the King will turn church. Ask for Steve. Good evening.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Boddler mentions over and over again to give thanks for the grateful heart, and so with that, let's bow our heads in prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we give you thanks for your overflowing generosity to all of us. On this eve of Thanksgiving or the Eve Eve, we thank you for the food we'll eat and all that you have richly blessed us with, especially mindful of our homes and our families and all our friends. We pray for our residents in this community. We pray for those who are passing through this holiday weekend. May our community be a beacon of your love and mercy. And while they praise you for all that we have, help us to be mindful of those who are not as fortunate, not only those here in Hutchinson, but also throughout the world. And so we ask of God that you use us, show us ways that we can be a blessing in the lives of others. Watch over our city council tonight. Bless the agenda before them. Help them to make decisions that serve our community and its residents. In Jesus' name, we pray these things. Amen.
Amen.
Happy Thanksgiving, you guys.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Next, a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? All right, we do have a resolution underneath there. Resolution one-five-five-one-one. Resolution accepting cash donation from the VFW Post nine oh six for the VFW Park improvements.
Motion to approve resolution one-five-five-one-one.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave, to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Public comment, citizens addressing the council, just please come forward, state your name and address. All right, moving on, approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, canvassing board minutes of November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Make motion to approve them.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda, this will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Boarding commission appointments. Appointment of Jim Fahey to the planning commission till March of two thousand twenty-seven. Appointment of Kim Shutt to the price board to August of two thousand twenty-five. Appointment of Elizabeth Sterns to the price board to August of two thousand twenty-five. Bees approval of the two thousand twenty-three invocation schedule. And C is approval of resolution number one-five-five-one-four. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of site plan review for parking lot plan located at one-twenty-five P Street North with favorable planning commission recommendation. And D is approval of resolution number one-five-five-one-eight. Resolution establishing traffic control device of snow parking on Jefferson Street Southeast from airport road intersection. E is approval of engineering service agreement for airport improvements. F is claim appropriation contract register A. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off? entertain a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda one.
I'll second that.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda two, claims and appropriations and contract payments, register B. My son has a check on there for his business, so I'm gonna abstain from the vote.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to approve with myself abstaining. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We do have a public hearing. We're gonna go down to, actually, we're gonna skip down to new business. Approve the city surveillance project. Mr. Tom, how are you tonight?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So if remember, or recall, this is a project that started a long time ago. A discussion about it did. We finally got to a point where we have a couple of quotes and are ready to move forward with the project. What we ended up with is twelve different sites with fifty-one cameras to do video surveillance through most of our public areas and many of the parks. We have two quotes. One is, they're actually from CIT. One is a cooperative purchasing program. The other is directly from CIT with discounts. So we could purchase right off of this one because it is a cooperative agreement, a government contract. I did ask for a second quote because it was gonna go out for another company. It ended up, they gave us another fifty-six hundred dollar discount. So they had no idea what I was gonna do at that point. It took them three months to come up with that discount just because they wanted to make sure that they did get this project. So, long time coming. They went to their vendors, got as many discounts as they could before they actually did a quote themselves directly to us. So, just gonna go through the parks because I think that's probably your biggest interest. So, at the campground, we have two cameras covering the shower area. We were not able to get anything to cover the dump station unless we would put a pole up in there. And with discussions with Lynn, we really don't wanna put a pole up there at this point. We certainly can in the future if we decide that there's some issues there, but right now, we're just gonna try to cover the bathroom area. And then over here, we've got one on the shelter to cover the van stand as much of this area as we can. The robbery park, we have two cameras covering the inside of that shelter. So that'll be completely covered. We've got a camera here that will cover this play area. This camera on the bathroom will cover in front of the bathrooms and will try to hit as much of this exercise area as we can. There's just so many trees in the way, it's gonna be difficult for some of these. Elks Park, we have one in the shelter and another one covering the play area. And then the final park is Roberts Park. We have four cameras covering each of the areas for vendors. With that, there's no questions. In front of you is a purchase order? Or your approval?
Tom, can that one down at Riverside, can the bathroom one cover that dump station at all or not?
There's trees in the way, so we can't get there.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Hang on just a second. I gotta point of clarification. So, Tom, you gave the two quotes up there. One is off the cooperative and the other one is not?
Correct.
And is like a five thousand dollar savings?
Fifty-six hundred dollar savings, yes.
I hate to do this. I think we have to do the one off the cooperative. Because, so.
You put those back up, Tom?
Put it back up there.
Yeah, I apologize, Tom. I wasn't completely understanding when we first looked at this.
So, as it was explained, so the total amount is gonna be more than a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yep.
Because of that, under the law, that project has to be bid out. You can, there's an exception to bidding out the project if you purchase off the cooperative venture.
Okay.
But it's proposed not to do that right now, right?
Correct.
So.
So, the Verkata company is the company, so this is gonna get a little longer. So, we had two companies we were looking at. One was Rhombus, one was Verkata. We got the second quote from Verkata, or actually, the second time we started going through this project, I went to Verkata because the Golden Valley, and there's another couple other metro cities that are already using Verkata, very happy with the product. I had them come out and do a quote as well. They were here for over four and a half hours to look at each and every camera installation and make tweaks as we went along. So, with these type of systems, I actually have to design it. That's the way those companies are set up. That's why we get a bit of a discount. With CIT, they wanna make sure the project's right, so they actually had somebody here four and a half hours doing this. With Rhombus, I had a guy here for less than forty-five minutes, and he said, "I'll just drive by the rest of the sites and give you a quote." So, much more comfortable with Verkata. Unfortunately, the person, or the reseller for Verkata in Minnesota is CIT. And so that's why two quotes come from CIT, one off the cooperative agreement and one giving their own discounts, just for some more clarification.
So, the P E P P M is still Verkata or not?
So, that's a PPM contract. So, it's called the PPM contract. It's a cooperative purchasing contract. Andy Reed does have an account with them, so it's something we can use. He did dig into it to make sure that we could use it. And I think Mark did some research as well.
Yeah, so it is a legitimate cooperative purchasing venture. The city could take advantage of the price that's listed on their contract. And it is really confusing because in order to take advantage of not having to bid it out and just purchase off this contract, as you can see, it's gonna end up costing the city about five thousand dollars more. The alternative would be to actually go out for bids on the project, reject these quotes. As it is right now, I don't think that you legally can accept this lower bid because it wasn't bid out, because it exceeds that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar threshold.
So, that's the benefit of the cooperatives is because they, this is gonna sound weird because they guarantee you the lowest price.
Right.
So, are you happiest with CIT?
Absolutely. Yes, night and day.
And we're gonna pay more for someone we don't like as much. I'm just wanting to be clear.
It's still the same, it's gonna be the same reseller and company. It's just one, I'm sorry, Mark, didn't mean to talk over you. One is a direct quote from CIT, the other is off of the contract price. So, they really undercut the contract.
Yeah. So, the alternative is you just don't approve it at this point, and Tom bids it out. You hope that CIT comes back with the same quote.
So, we're looking for a table right now? Is that what we're doing?
Well, you'd actually, you'd actually have to either accept the higher bid or reject them both and bid it out.
Right.
So, reject both and have them bid it out?
No, it's all work for Tom.
Sorry, Tom.
How long does that kick that out, Tom? Any idea if we reject and rebid?
It took me, well, I think we started on this probably four or five months ago before I finally got the pricing, just because of.
It was with the art funds that kinda initialized this, correct?
Right, correct. The question I'll have to wrestle with is, well, it won't be, basically, the project is going to be different then. So, what we'll do is we'll spec what we want in each area, and then we don't know what company we'll get. So, it may or may not be the Verkata equipment. It may be something else.
This is why we get paid the big bucks.
And I would say, I think, I think unfortunately, legally, you have to either accept the either the higher bid or you have to reject it all and go up for bids. Because with state law, anything that's over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, you have to bid out. Or the alternative is if it's on a state contract or it's a cooperative agreement. And the one on the right is a cooperative agreement. So, then we don't have to do the, then we don't have to do the bidding requirement portion of that. Now, the risk you have if you go and you bid out is, are you gonna get a lower bid than even two seventeen?
Prices can be higher.
Right. I was just, that's what I was just gonna say. We should just.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the P E P P M contract quote.
I can second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to approve the P E P P M contract quote. Any other discussion?
I just have one question for you, Tom. I mean, I approve, I like where the cameras are all going, but there's nothing in our park on Main Street. You know, I mean, we've had so much stuff going on in that park.
So, what we did is I worked with Lynn and we tried to figure out what our top parks, our top areas that we wanted to cover, where we actually had infrastructure in place where it would be more cost-effective to cover. And this is the list that we came up with for the parks.
The problem is we don't have the infrastructure in place
Right.
at the Main Street Park, just to put up
Correct.
to pull up a camera. We could do it, but we're gonna have to invest more in getting the infrastructure to the point where you could put up a camera in that park.
Right. I mean, I do know, you know, we've had vandalism in that park quite a bit, too. I mean, maybe that can come later. I don't.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know why there wasn't. I thought, you know, there's a lot of trees in there, and I mean, I understand that, but, you know, and I've always approved of having the cameras in the parks.
Yep.
It's a good list.
Thanks.
So, Tom, how long does, like, the, you know, I think mine, my surveillance at the shop, I think, stays like for two days or something like that, or how long would this go?
This'll be thirty days, but then we can have triggering events that actually archive it for longer. So, everything will be for a minimum of thirty days.
I think it's important for us to emphasize, too, it's for security purposes and issues that we've had with vandalism. Get that out there. We're not there to, it's not Big Brother trying to spy on the.
My only concern is if we let it out, we reject this and let it out, with the way pricing is, do those bids come in higher? Just because of the timeframe. I mean, that's kind of a concern of mine, the way everything's going up. I don't know.
That'd be mine, too.
I mean, if they all come in seven grand higher, then we just shot ourselves in the foot where we're trying to save money. And that's not me trying to say, "Let's go for the higher amount," but this is a hard one.
I mean, it should be easy, but it's hard because that's the risk you take. I mean, I think that probably plays into Chad's motion to,
Oh, I feel if Tom's comfortable with this company, I think this is what we should go with, because I don't think that's gonna come down lower, so.
I agree.
Like I said, five grand will be paid for if it saves one vandalism event in the spring.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. So, any other discussion? Otherwise, I'll call a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Aye.
We'll call. Mary?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
When, Tom, what's the timeframe?
So, they will start probably in the next month because they want to use some of the, build the interior work that we can over the cold months. And then I would hope it to be done by June at the latest.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go back up and we'll do the Hutchinson Center for the Arts annual update. How are you tonight, Molly?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. I see you brought your posse with, because I was kinda teasing.
Yes. All right, so for those who don't know me, my name's Molly Rivera. I'm the executive director at the Hutchinson Center for the Arts. And I'm here tonight with some of the members of our board, just to give you an update on how we've used the city funding this past year, as well as kind of fill you in on what we do, if for those that may not be familiar. So, since the very beginning, the HCA was founded on the idea of collaboration, and we believe that we're stronger together. So, we are made up of currently ten different arts and culture partner groups, and we have them listed up here for you. And all these groups have their own programming. Together with the HCA, we draw almost sixty-two thousand attendees annually to all of our different events. And so, in order to help our partners succeed, we offer a lot of different benefits such as full health coverage, or full insurance coverage, excuse me, brick and mortar benefits. So, that includes an address for mail or, you know, event space, storage space, all of that. We also offer administrative resources, so we sell their tickets for different events. We also have a platform to accept donations for our partners. We also do a lot of marketing for their different events, and then we serve as a fiscal agent for any grants that they might want to apply for. So, if any of our partners are not a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit, they don't qualify for a lot of different grants out there, but underneath our umbrella, they do. So, that just ensures that they get funding in addition to how we help them. And in the past few years, because of COVID, a lot of our partners have had to kind of put a halt on a lot of their programming. But this year, a lot of them have been very busy. So, River Song came back this year, and they had their festival again this year. We also had Crow River Youth Choir that started their programming up again in the fall. And then the Hutchinson Theater Company is announcing their programming for two thousand twenty-three this winter, so we're looking forward to that as well. So, our partners have been very busy this year. The HCA and our programming, we've also been very busy. So, I'm gonna turn that over to our vice president, Carrie, here, and she's gonna share about our programming.
Is it the next slide or is it?
Oh, yeah.
Well, hi, I'm Carrie Ward. I have been on the board since, I believe, the end of two thousand twenty during COVID times, so it's been really strange. This is my first, like, full year of being able to be boots on the ground and working on the board and doing some great things. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about our local artists and regional artists. We recently had an artist reception on Saturday, which was really great. She had roots in Hutchinson, so we had a lot of fun people filling our space and viewing her work. And just great to have that connection to Hutchinson and the surrounding community. And we offer exposure for a lot of visual arts across the state. And I sat on a committee to help bring in the two thousand twenty-three artists, and it was a really good learning experience and great to see all the different artists that are in the state that we're bringing to our community. And in the past year, the Youth and Community Showcase brought us over one thousand viewers to the gallery, which is pretty cool. So, bringing a reach beyond Hutchinson. I am a Glencoe resident, and I feel like that is a big pull, as you guys are probably more of a regional hub for art, and we don't have that in Glencoe, so. So, education, that's been the number one request. We did some surveys of people, and that is one reason why I started coming to the Center of the Arts, is to participate in some of the classes that are being taught. And so, we offer youth and adult classes. And we have served a lot of people, and we've had a request that classes should be increased, and that was by almost seventy percent the last year. So, we have one coming up in December and in January I'm really excited about. And then community outreach. I got to help. Oh, that's me. You put me in there. That's me on the left helping at Farmer's Market, which was a great way to do outreach. I didn't expect that I was in there. That's funny. So, I really enjoyed that time. A lot of people asked about the center. They asked about, we promoted our open studio, which is new this year, and that's just a great way for people who are maybe scared to buy, like, art stuff, to come and visit the studio and try some great things and not have to buy all that stuff. And you can leave a mess at the center. So, that's pretty cool, right? And so, it has been for people of all ages, families, adults, or we can bring our own supplies and make a mess at the center. So, that's been fun. And we put out over seven hundred and twenty free take-home art kits over the last year and other places we participated was at the county fair, Unified Art Day with Special Olympics, and trying to make art accessible to everyone. I'm gonna switch it back to Molly.
So, this year, we were able to operate a balanced budget thanks to state, regional, and local grants, as well as individual and corporate donations, and of course, the city of Hutchinson. We really appreciate your continued support, and we want you to know that this money goes directly back to our community, not only through our programming and the programming of our partners, but also financially as well. So, this is some data from a study through Creative Minnesota that shows that the nonprofit arts and culture groups in Hutchinson, so that includes the art center and all of our partners, it brings in over two million dollars to our local economy here in the city. And so, I just think that this demonstrates really well that the arts are thriving in our community, and that when the arts do well, then the city does well. And we are gonna be requesting an additional updated study for next year, so we look forward to sharing that with you guys as well. So, at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about this past year. Otherwise, we will let you continue on with your business.
It's a good presentation. Kind of surprised with the amount of dollars generated. That includes, like, River Song and other activities that brought people to Hutch?
Yep, yep. River Song, the Pottery Festival, yeah, all of it.
Very nice.
I like your programs for the children.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. It was great to get out in the community again this year and the fair and all of that stuff. Yeah, it was great to make that connection with families again.
You guys do a good job.
Thank you.
So, since the pandemic, are you getting daycares and stuff to come in during, like, art days again? Because that happened before the pandemic and
Right. Yep, yep. So, that's kind of something that we're hoping to transition to next year.
Sure.
So, the free art kits were a way to kind of be able to offer free programming during COVID. But now that, you know, things are kind of getting a little bit back to normalcy, we're hoping to do more in-person programming again.
Perfect.
I'm sure all the mothers, like, coming there and leaving the mess at the art center.
Although I will say, we make the kids clean up. We don't do everything.
Anything else for Molly?
Oh, looks good.
Always thank you for your support.
You guys.
Thank you.
Public hearing. We have items for Robert Road Southwest, letting number one, project number twenty-three dash one. The resolutions underneath there is one-five-five-one-three, ordering improvements and preparations of plans and specifications, and resolution number one-five-five-one-five, approving plans and specification, ordering advertisements for bids, and items for Jefferson Street Southeast, letting number four, project number twenty-three dash O five. Two resolutions underneath there is resolution number one-five-five-one-six, ordering improvements and preparations of plans and specifications, and resolution number one-five-five-one-seven, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids. Mr. Olson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am John Olson, interim public works director. Also here with me tonight is Justin Black, who's interim city engineer. And we would like to go over, this is actually the hearing on improvement for Roberts Road Southwest between Allen Street Southwest to Dale Street Southwest. A continuation of the project that was built in two thousand seventeen when the high school was constructed. The roadway will have a similar look to the east as it does now near the high school. Similar street width on the north side, there will be also a trail that's carried on to the east all the way to Dale Street. Uh, similar street width on the north side, there will be, uh, also a trail that's carried on to the east all the way to Dale Street. The initial work on this program, uh, on this project actually began in two thousand eighteen. Uh, over the last few years, the city staff has been collecting information about the roadway and designing the project to meet, uh, any of the issues that we've found. And so far, we've gone through a few of the steps in the process for this project. We introduced the project and prepared a feasibility report for the project. And on November tenth, we held a neighborhood meeting to discuss the project, which leads us up to tonight's hearing on the improvement. This project will include new water main along the whole length of the roadway, street improvements and replacement of the sidewalk with a new trail on the north side of Robert Street, uh, Roberts Road. Uh, to prevent any problems from settling where we install new water main, uh, our intent is to, uh, finish the paving in two thousand twenty-four for this project. So the last little bit of, uh, the two minutes will be left until two thousand twenty-four. The water main in this area has a history of failing, uh, so it was determined best to replace it as we, uh, take on the roadway improvements. Currently, uh, near Allen Street, there is a transitional curb that widens out to the original street width just east of Allen Street. Uh, with this project, the curb line will be actually straightened out to accommodate the trail construction on the north side of the street. And during construction, property owners on K Street and Larson Streets will have access from the north or south, depending on which side of the Roberts they're on. So. Uh, the straight roadway continues, uh, to the east to Saint Anastasia Catholic Church. Uh, access to Hidden Circle is identified as a priority for the contractor during the project. Um, obviously there might be short periods of time when access is limited into hidden circles, such as when water main is being dug in or when the paving operations go by. But the intent is to provide, um, emergency access at all times and, uh, access to resident vehicles to the extent possible. Might be a little bit of, uh, off-roading and navigating to get back in there, but you will be able to get back there. The roadway section curves slightly on the east side of Saint A's Church. And access to both Global Fixure Company and the Global Circle is also identified as a priority for the contractor during the project. Again, uh, short periods of time, there may be limited access due to installation of water main or paving operations. Again, um, access by emergency vehicles at all times and, uh, other vehicles to the extent possible. Um, sometimes during construction, there may be a little, uh, lane that the contractor, uh, identifies for oncoming tra- or traffic in and out of those circles. So that, that, similar to what we experienced on the west side of the rec center this past summer. At the very east end of the project, um, there's a slight curve in the north, uh, curb line. That helps to make some of the turning traffic work. Uh, the median will be replaced to stay the same as it is today. And, uh, that feature really has become a fixture in our community and many people look forward to the plantings and the flowers that the garden club puts in. And so we have met with them and, and discussed with them. Basically, it's going to be, uh, same as it is today. It'll be put right back for that. So there would be a year with no flowers, but, uh, hopefully we can get them back in right away following year. So. The project construction is estimated at nearly one point eight million dollars with engineering and consulting costs of roughly three hundred and seventy-five thousand. The roadway is designated as a municipal state aid street. So it is eligible for state funding. And we anticipate using one point one million of state aid to offset a majority of the city's costs to reconstruct the project. This will leave, uh, city's MSA balance at approximately two point five million dollars after this project. Assessments are anticipated to generate approximately five percent of the total project funding. As we aggregate all of the different funding sources for all of the projects for two thousand twenty-three that we're proposing, we're at, sitting currently at a, an assessment rate of twenty-three percent. So we would be eligible for the general obligation improvement bonds. The areas highlighted in yellow here on the west side of the project are those with assessable frontage. The, these assessments have been communicated to these property owners or proposed assessments. And then on the east end of the project, these are the, um, the highlighted yellow properties are the, those with assessable frontage. You'll see some properties do not have frontage. Um, that's due primarily to the corner credit that we typically give of a hundred and thirty-two feet on a side yard. So. I, I, I think I'll move right into the, uh, next, uh, for Jefferson. Again, this is the public hea- or the hearing on improvement for Jefferson Street Southeast between Airport Road and Edmonton Avenue Southeast. Uh, this project is actually being headed up by McLeod County. The project is in conjunction with intercept, intersection safety, uh, project that they are doing at the intersection of Jefferson and Airport Road. Jefferson Street on the north leg of that project will end, uh, will be, is being turned back to the city. So it becomes City Street at that point. And the project will involve, uh, street improvements and trail. Again, for the last few years, uh, city staff has been working with McLeod County to address this project. Um, uh, especially as we anticipated what those, you know, safety improvements would be at this point around about at the intersection of Jefferson and Airport Road. Uh, so we've gone through a few steps again in this process, project, uh, processes. And we've introduced the project, prepared the feasibility report. Uh, November tenth, we held the neighborhood meeting and tonight's hearing on improvement. The county's project to match into the new roundabout starts on Jefferson Road, south of Airport Road. The roundabout is being built as a separate project. The city project begins to the north of the roundabout and it will include a new street section and a ten-foot walkway. Uh, the street section continues to the north to the intersection of Toronto Boulevard. Southeast residents of Toronto Boulevard will have access off of Ottawa Avenue, just to the west of this map. And between Toronto and Edmonton, the section continues, including the ten-foot walkway. And once we get up to the intersection of Edmonton Avenue, there will be a need to do some patching on the southwest corner of that intersection to accommodate the pedestrian ramp for the walkway. Project construction is estimated at just over six hundred and thirty thousand with consulting costs of, um, twenty-five thousand in construction, six hundred and five. Uh, we anticipate funding the majority of this cost with general obligation improvement bonds. And assessments in this case are, uh, anticipated to generate about six percent of the project funding. Again, uh, looking at it in aggregate, we're at about twenty-three percent, uh, for all projects. The two yellow highlighted properties are proposed to be assessed for this project and the orange ones are, uh, no assessment due to that being the rear yard baggage to the street. Um, again, thank you. I'm here, I'm happy to answer any questions about either project. And the questions that I cannot answer, I will see if Justin can. So be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Counsel, you want to, one at a time? Or do you wanna?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor, I would encourage you to open a public hearing for the Roberts Road.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing for Roberts Road, uh.
For, for those of you in attendance from the public who would like to come and address the council regarding the proposed project for Roberts Road, um, we just ask that you come forward to the desk, state your name and address, um, for the record. And then I guess provide any questions or comments to the council that you so choose.
Hello, my name is Laura Kuvas. I live at five oh five Hidden Circle and I just had two questions. Um, I was wondering if you could explain what the credit for the corner credit is and how that works?
Sure.
And then the second question, you mentioned a neighborhood meeting that was held. I was wondering if you could tell more, say more about that and where that took place and who was invited?
Sure. The city's assessment policy, um, indicates that we take the assessment on the, on the narrowest part of the lot. And any of the side yard that exceeds a hundred and thirty-two feet. A typical, um, one, it's a single family home lot is sixty-six feet wide by a hundred and thirty-two feet long. That's a typical slo- slot size. So what we do is on the, if you have a longer side yard than a hundred and thirty-two feet, we re- we reduce the total by a hundred and thirty-two. And then that's, uh, that amount is where the assessment is applied to. And that way, if you're on the narrow side of the street, when that comes by, you would get assessed for a hundred percent of that frontage you have on the narrow side, if that makes sense. So you're, so you're in essence, um, you know, this is a hundred percent, this is minus a hundred and thirty-two feet of, of that. So that's, that's how that assessment is calculated. Uh, the neighborhood meetings went out to, uh, the invitations did go out to, uh, most of the, well, everybody that had an assessment or potential assessment or frontage or sideage, side yard on the property itself. Um, held on November tenth. We had, I believe, one, one per, one person that came, uh, to the, to the meeting. And, uh, you know, had some concerns specifically to the, uh, to the, uh, project that, uh, affected his property as far as, uh, water. So, okay.
Just a clarifying question. How did the invites go out? Cause we never received an invitation for a community meeting. So I was wondering, were they emailed? Was there a notice like on Facebook or was it mailed?
Mailed.
This was the first notice that we got. I'm not overly worried about the assessments. I'm just trying to understand the information we've been given. And I didn't know that there was a community meeting.
Should have been mailed to.
Yeah, the, 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 I know that there were some questions that came up after the initial invitation was mailed out relative to Hidden Circle and Global Circle. We had several people call about, um, you know.
Is there property being assessed? I can't, I don't know which.
Uh, you are on.
We're on Hidden Circle, so we're in the corner. And so we have that corner credit, so it's a minimal assessment for us. Um, we're at five oh five. So that's why I'm wondering, cause we got this, but I didn't know about a community meeting.
Should have had the neighborhood.
Yeah, we should have had, you should have had both then. So, okay, I can check with, uh, and five oh five?
Yes, just, just curious for our own information.
Should have come through.
Thank you for letting me.
It'll probably come a week late, right? It's just, you know, supply chain delays.
Then, yeah, let me double check our system because.
Yes, we, we do want to make sure that we're getting it right here too. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm John Healy and I live on the corner of, uh, Roberts Road and K Street. And, uh, my long side is on K Street. Now, how does that affect my assessment? Cause my long side is almost two hundred feet and I got a hundred and sixty-five on, on, uh, Roberts Road.
Right.
Corner lot.
This, you have a K Street address. This is a Robert Street address here, right here.
Eleven oh four, I'm a second house to the east of the high school on the south side.
Okay, so probably this one. Let me look you up quick.
Yeah, I got, uh, Roberts Road, uh, address. I bought the house from Bob Roberts. That's why, that's how they named the road there.
The guy who named it? So you're, what's the address again, sir?
Second.
It's, uh, eleven oh four Roberts Road.
Eleven oh four.
Roberts Road, yeah. But it's a corner lot and my longest side is on K Street. And I, I've had, they told me that I gotta pay for, uh, any assessments that are on your longest side. So I got nailed a couple of times on K Street.
Right. Which is why the corner credit was applied.
Was that right?
From a previous, from a previous, uh, assessment, correct? Cause you did pay the long side on K.
Yeah, I think they put, when I first moved there, it was like curb and gutter and then, uh, later they resurfaced it.
Correct, yes.
He's got the corner credit then for.
Correct. For the, for the, yes, for this side because he paid the full assessment on the K Street side. Mm-hmm. And, and that's mainly because the house is, you know, you can kind of go.
But I'd still get, I still would have to pay for the thirty-three feet or whatever it is?
Correct, yeah. Mm-hmm. And that would be net of that, again, taking a hundred and thirty-two feet off of the, the side.
Yeah.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you're welcome.
Anyone else for Roberts Road?
Laura Kuvas again from Hidden Circle. I just have another question as I'm looking at that annoying the project and how it was, the street was narrowed down by the high school. So does Roberts then cut, become completely all aligned where it starts getting more narrow? Like it does by the high school all the way to Dale? Is that the end result of the project? Just that I'm clear?
Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm. Yeah, that, that, that look will continue all the way to Dale Street. So the nar- it'll be narrowed up with, uh, parking on the south side of the street. Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
It should match the same curb line that's currently existing on.
By the high.
West end of that.
Cause that will make for a wider walking path trail along the north side of Sanes along in there. And will there still be a bike lane then that goes on the road?
No.
No. So the bike traffic, that bike lane that's there today would.
Would be on the.
Transition to the, the trail.
The trail would, would end up on here and you'd have, uh, just a, a two lane with a parking lane on the south.
And there would be parking all the way along?
For the most part, yes. Yeah. I don't recall that, you know, there's some timed parking on the west end that would go to, um, K Street. That would go probably in front of your place there, some timed parking similar to what there has been in the past. And then east of there probably, uh, would be parking at any time other than, uh, two to six during the winter.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else on Roberts Road?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to close the public hearing on Roberts Road Southwest. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Entertain a motion for those two resolutions.
Motion approve resolution one five five one three and one five five one five for Roberts Road letting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, or by Pat, second by Chad. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Carrie, Mary, open the public hearing for Jefferson Street Southeast.
Once again, similar to the Roberts Road, um, are there any residents in attendance who would like to comment on the Jefferson Street Southeast project? I'm gonna ask you to come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to close the public hearing on Jefferson Street Southeast. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Oppose? Carried.
To approve resolution one-five-five-one-six and one-five-five-one-seven Jefferson Street letting.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary to approve both resolutions for Jefferson Street Southeast. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Carried.
John, will you and Justin make yourself available?
Yes.
For any additional questions?
Any, anytime, yes. Uh, you can contact me at the city center. Three-two-zero-two-three-four-four-four-seven-three or uh email is J O L S O N at Hutchinson M N dot G O V gov. Um, I would like to just take a, a real uh short time to thank um the engineering staff, um Keith Messner, Chad, Josie, um and Justin. When Kent was leaving, I begged him, please, to take care of the two thousand twenty-one projects to the extent possible, which he did a very good job of. In fact, we just got some of the last paperwork uh today on some of those two thousand twenty-one projects. And I begged him, please, uh, get us to a point where the twenty thousand, the two thousand twenty-two projects are in a place that we can move forward from. And he did, he did that and did a good job of that. Um, what that left us was uh coming up with the two thousand twenty-three projects in a very short amount of time. And uh, not that we hadn't been looking at these projects, but putting it all together in a set of plans and figuring out how we're going to do the project. Um, that took a lot of extra effort this fall from those folks. And I just really wanna uh express my gratitude to, for the work that they do. And they did for us. I think both of these projects will serve the community for a long, long time. And uh, I've been dreaming of the day of finishing Roberts to get it done. And it drives me kinda batty crossing that magic line uh at Allen Street. So, thank you very much.
So John, if, if anybody had any additional questions, then I would.
Oh, yes, uh, I can stay, uh, I'll, I'll step out and Justin and I would be available if there's any other questions.
Okay, thanks, John.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, John, for all you do too.
Thanks.
All right, moving on, uh, we have minutes, reports from committees, boards for commissions. We have the planning commission minutes from October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The Hutchhausen Redevelopment Authority Board minutes from October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Public Arts Commission made a minutes from October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. The City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Reinvestment Investment Report for October twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. Jakes, everybody clear it out.
We're all getting ready for Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Ladies are sticking it out.
Work hurts. Thank you. Stay in. Keep us company.
All right. Mark, do you have anything else?
Nothing else tonight.
Nothing else? Pat, let's start with you.
All right, uh, I don't know the official term, but people go out shopping this weekend and just keep your local, local people in mind as you go out and spend those dollars this weekend. I bought a hat from, a hat and a shirt from the arts building the other day. So I, I've yet to see another five-five-three-five-oh hat, but I'm proud of the one I got. And we also got Clay Coyote in attendance, so I mean. Chad, throwing a plug for him. Shop local. Now I've hit all my chairs with my plugs.
But somebody needs glass.
Give me a screen, some windshield. Think about that instead of driving and then just encourage people out to uh to visit the, to visit all the stores and the stuff we have to offer here. That's.
Shout out for Mary, right?
Yes.
Hashtag much and hutch.
Yes.
Not, not the Mary, the other Mary.
I know that.
All right, thanks, Pat. Chad?
Anything extra? Just wish everybody happy Thanksgiving and safe travels.
Yep. Mary?
Well, happy Thanksgiving, safe travels, enjoy your families, friends. Think of the people who sacrificed a lot for us and be thankful for that, for all our veterans that are out there. Happy Thanksgiving. If you're here or you're abroad, we all need to be thankful for them. It's because of them we live in a free country. Also, I just wanted to say happy birthday to our mayor who's gonna be a little bit older tomorrow.
Really? Matt, it was Matt's birthday last week.
He's gonna be. Okay, we're not, not reflecting off of you, so I know how old you're getting, so. Gonna be a little bit older though.
All right, thanks, Mary. Oh, Mary, aren't you gonna say anything about, I, I gotta shout out to the, our parks department. They were busy as beavers in the park putting up lights, huh?
Oh, I know Sarah and I have had quite a few conversations and there'll be a couple of new things in the park this year, so.
Oh.
Keep your eyes open.
So they light them up on Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving, yeah. They've been busy.
Yeah, I noticed they.
And at least the weather's cooperated now a little bit. I saw them out there one day and it was cold, but.
They were in the spirit.
Job.
They were in the spirit, Mary.
They are in the spirit.
Thanks, Mary. Dave?
Uh, everyone said about everything that you can say about this weekend, shopping in town, happy Thanksgiving, uh be safe and all like this stuff. And so I'll just reiterate that and uh keep your eyes open and ears open and be safe.
Thank you. Matt?
Cabal's keeping things, uh, just a reminder, offices are closed Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday. Yeah, I know Councilmember May will be attending the Public Works Director, the finalists interviews, but if one more of you were interested, um, we could do that, cause we don't need to call a hearing then. You all should have received an invite for the, the town hall and childcare. That's next Tuesday at six.
I'm going.
Okay, I'm just making sure we don't have more than two there. And then since we have an extra week in between council meetings, just a reminder that my performance review is December sixth at four fifteen. Only if it's gonna be good, remember that. And then our truth and taxation hearing is uh Tuesday, December sixth at six P M in the council chambers as well. And that's it for me. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yep, everybody uh be safe and have a good Thanksgiving.
Motion to adjourn.